Seven. And introductions.
Why don't we start?
Over there.
With that.
Dave Horner, Proctor.
Karen Hale, staff.
Logan Solomon, staff.
Mary Case Gaza, staff.
Laura Black, Shrewsbury.
Robert Hibbs, Hubbard.
Lori Purcell, Mendon.
Jason Mavell, Fairhaven.
Bob Richards, alternate.
Darius Todd, or Danby.
Michael Scoburn, alternate, Castleton.
David Leir, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Emma.
David Leir, Rutland City.
Josh Schneider, Brandon.
Erica Burner, Wallingford.
Leon Miners, Wes Rutland.
Bob Kurtback, Iowa.
And Reed, alternate, Pittsburgh.
All right, and Devon Air Executive Director, we'll go to our folks online, we've got Barbara Thompson from Sudbury. Hey Barbara. Got Chris Howland, representative from Rutland Town, Rutland City. Thank you, Chris, for coming. Jim Harrison, from representative from Chittenden, a bunch of other towns not in our region, it doesn't matter, right?
Killington.
Killington as well, yeah. Jessica Metcalf from Mount Holly. Judy Gilmore from Timmott. Linda Linton from Palet. Maggie O'Brien, staff. Will Austin from Killington. And then Representative Chris Keizer from Rutland City. First off, I want to say thank you, everybody, this is a full house, exciting to see everybody, and a special welcome, we have several new commissioners and some returning new commissioners, so from Chittenden, I don't see them online. We have new commissioners, Abigail Bradish and Lori Wilson, so welcome to Chittenden, folks. From Clarinet, we have Sarah Coon, who was, I don't think she's on yet. Returning Bob Richards, good to see you again, Bob. Our new Commissioner Linda Linton from Palet, thank you Linda. Anne Reed from Pittsburgh. And of course, David Leir from Rutland City, welcome back, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of the April fifteenth agenda, any changes, corrections? If not, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any noes? Ayes have it, of course. Approval of the March eighteenth minutes? Any additions, subtractions, corrections? If not, may I have a motion?
So, hold.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye of accepting the minutes, aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, open to the public? We have no problem, we don't even have the dogs tonight. Okay, so we are closed to the public. Next on the agenda is the Rutland County Legislative Report.
So, yeah, we are, we have some great visitors today, we've got Chris, Chris and Jim. Joining us from the delegation, you all had asked, kind of in the middle of winter, if we could invite these folks to come and talk to the committee about the great work they're doing in Montpelier. And also, an opportunity for you all to provide feedback about priorities from the region, both legislatively and up. So, yeah, I'll turn it over, Jim, Chris, and Chris, thank you again for coming.
If you don't mind, Chris and Chris, I'll, I'll go ahead and start. I just want to help Devin with the towns I represent, it's Chittenden, Mendon, Killington, and Pittsfield, Pittsfield actually part of Rutland County, but for the Planning Commission, it's part of, out of Queches, Two Rivers out of Queche, so. Anyhow, it's nice to be here. I've been in the legislature for a few terms now, and the sessions, each, each of them are different in different ways. And this one is certainly no different, in part because of the change in the political makeup and the governor perhaps having a little bit more influence this, this session going forward. Having said that, I sit on the Appropriations Committee. And we passed out our version of the, in the House, of our version of the state budget. Just over nine billion dollars, including federal funds, education, and everything else, so I'm happy to try to answer any questions if people have it on that. One of the notable things that we did is, for many years, part of the state police has been paid for out of the Transportation Fund. Transportation Fund revenues are not keeping up with the cost of construction projects, et cetera, for a variety of reasons. And as a consequence, we are charging all those state police costs now to the, to the general fund budget. As of, the state police, we were charging off in excess of twenty million dollars a year to the Transportation Fund, so, no more. And then, you know, the others may want to comment on it, last week, the House passage version of the Education Reform Bill. Some people like it, some people don't like it. The governor, I think, in his statement appreciated the fact that it moved forward. But it wasn't a bill that he could sign at this point, and was hoping for further changes in the Senate, so I'll stop there. You know, I don't know which Chris wants to, we have a, a number of new Chris's in the Rutland delegation, so they have their own little caucus and I'm not always sure which one I'm calling on, so. Maybe, maybe Chris Keizer can tell us what he's doing in transportation and how much roads and bridges have been reduced this year. But we could go to the other Chris while he's trying to figure that out. I know you can do it.
Well, I sit on the Transportation, there, excuse me, I sit on the Energy Digital Infrastructure Committee. And we're working, I guess the one bill we got going forward is expedited filing privileges for solar up to twenty-five KV, it was fifteen KV. And for those of you in the region, one of the issues that is added to that bill is a ten-foot setback from the property line. Currently, your local ordinances can't be enforced if they're greater than that, there's no setbacks under the two forty-eight criteria. Going forward, we're looking at some more how IT is funded. And, yes, we put out one bill, but I can't recall what it was right now. So, and that went over to the Senate before crossover. The global, any of the energy proposals have not yet been taken off the wall, so to speak. Which means they're not being discussed at this time. Any questions?
Chris Keizer, did you figure out?
Right, so sure. Yeah, so I figured it out, everybody hear me all right?
Yeah.
All right, here we go, so I'm on the Transportation Committee, and for those that don't know me, I'm Chris Keizer, I'm on, I live on Church Street and represent the northwestern side of the city. And, so, basically, not knowing quite where to start here, I had been on the Planning Commission way back when, so I know of which you speak. And part of, of what I understand, the, the Planning Commission's role is, is to make sure that you work with AOT. The smaller towns really need to have that help to go through the labyrinth of, of the various grants that seem to be coming along, so I would encourage you that, that's what's represented in the committee by AOT and the Planning Commissions, Devin being one, that, that you really do help the towns along, so I encourage you to, to do that. One thing relative to the towns and the T bill, there was a state, we understand highway town, town highway funding had been everybody's under pressure as far as your money is concerned, so there was, there's the amount that is going to be available in the, in the twenty-six budget will be a base amount, and you should know that the committee put a, tied it to inflation. So you should see a continuing increase in the, in the monies coming into the town highway funding formula. Which should help everybody and, and it won't be used as a balancing item anymore. Jim alluded to the fact that we've had a turn down in revenue, and that's basically attributed to a lot of the environmental initiatives that have been done, where you have a decrease in use in carbon fuels. So you have a decrease in, in the use tax associated with it. I'd like to go over basically the, the amount of roadwork that's going to be done in, in, in the county. And I'll start this way, Ludlow is on Route Junction of one hundred and one oh three. They'll be repaving this year of about two miles there. In Pittsburgh, we all like that bridge that's going up, and they, it's, it's scheduled for finish this October. And that'll be, that's the three and seven bridge in Pittsburgh. Polley, when you go south, if you go straight through the village, that's thirty-one. And there's a bridge that goes across the Polley River, that's going to get some rehab done, that's one of those bridges that went up in twenty-seven, so making a little more life out of that. There's going to be, Rutland City is going to enjoy some more paving, Route Four, Business Four, and US Seven, there's about six miles of repaving. Rutland Town, on US Four, there's two bridges that are going to be repaired. And they're slated to be finished in two thousand and twenty-six, so expect inconvenience there. Wallingford, one oh three, so as you go south on, on one oh, what is it, one oh three? You, you, just north of the village, there's a, just north of the village. Anyway, there's a, a railroad bridge that goes over the road there, and that is selected for repair. It's going to be completed this year, and last but not least, Castleton, Route Four A, there's a bridge over the repair the bridge over the Piantic Road, and that's going to be finished in two thousand and twenty-six. So that's basically what's going to happen, it's scheduled to happen in our, in our county. Again, I'll ask for any questions?
Yeah.
Yep, so not so much a question, just a couple of comments, just David Leir, by the way. I would just want to thank the three of you for appearing tonight before the commission. And I wanted to tip my hat to, in deference to the other two, but Chris Keizer is my representative from my district, and I actually had the pleasure of serving on his committee twenty years ago. And we were talking about the same subjects then as you're talking about now, pretty much. The one thing that stood out that you just said was the town highway funding, which affects everybody here in this room. And having an inflation factor in there to keep ramping that up, I think is so important in light of all the stuff that's coming out of Washington, and it's so much not really knowing what's going to happen in a lot of the areas, so I appreciate hearing that, and as a local official, it'll and make at least one part of my life a little bit easier, so thank you.
Chris, I do have a question for you on the formula funding. Will we see an increase in the Class Two Highway and Structures Grants as well, because I know that's been a serious pinch felt by the municipalities?
Yeah, and that, and that's, Devin, that's one of the reasons I, I went over what the projects were. A lot of those are, I, I get they're artilleryals. And that particular, and I don't have that number in front of me, nor do I remember history, because I, and, and what I'm what I know is that there is, that's a funded number, and so that's going to vary on a year to year. Just to give you a sense. So we have nine, there was nine hundred million dollars that was allocated in the governor's budget towards transportation. We have, just, and this is a long way around to answer that question, is there's a pull for everybody's money for the, and, and for example, the, the amount of roads that we have in, in Vermont that needs paving are about thirty-one hundred miles. You would expect that to need about, to do ten mi, ten percent of those every year, three hundred miles for, for a good life cycle. Currently, in this budget, we're doing a hundred and twenty. That's on the heels of doing about two hundred in the last two years. So unfortunately, it seems like there's, the, the money is being rationed out, and I don't think, Devin, you're, you're going to see much of an increase for Class Two or Class Three, except for what you, I just said about the inflator for the, for the town highway budget, which is included there.
Appreciate that, Chris, and I know it's an impossible balance right now, so I understand what you're doing. We, I know there were probably going to be questions tonight about three acre rule, but I don't see Terry on the line. Any of you guys have any awareness of those updates, or they haven't made it out of those select committees yet?
Terry, Terry's in the room trying to sign on.
Oh, right, okay, yeah.
So if you want to wait for him to get signed on, or he can come stand in front of this computer.
Yeah, that would be fun.
All right, here he comes, I'll, I'll let him sit down here.
Sorry I got here late, guys.
That is okay, good to see you, former Commissioner Williams.
Yeah, so what's your question?
About three acre rule, if there's been any movement or changes that we could expect to that legislation.
Yeah, I think so, there's H four eighty-one is being taken up in my committee right now. We're going to have Secretary Julie Moore in tomorrow to testify. They've got a lot more problems than they thought they had. And I think in a way that's good, because now they've got, they found some money. So the people that have, have done their due diligence and didn't, didn't apply for the money, I'm trying to make sure that they get, they get considered with the funding for repayment. There's also another concern, Act one eighty-one, which you guys are talking about tonight. That, that affects any property that's being developed now, that's got one, one acre or less of impervious surface, so. Anyway, the good news is that it's on the radar. The governor has, is aware of it, even though I think Mayor Dunn just sent two letters and they never got to the, not got to the governor. He is aware of it now. So all I can tell you is, stand by, Vermont League of Cities and Towns came in and testified because the H four eighty-one, the plan is to get the municipalities in the state to organize stormwater districts. VLCT came in and said that they're not interested in doing that. And that the five million dollars they came up with is a little bit short, they're saying probably before it's all said and done, it would cost seven hundred million.
Those are off.
So, to me, that, you know, once Chittenden County started to weigh in, people started paying attention. And, and I actually said that on YouTube, that Senator Tom Chittenden put in a bill, S twenty-four, because he had a bunch of his constituents who were, realized that they were on that three acre list. The, the main thing that we're asking them to do right now is to go back to the list and prioritize based on what's actually a real problem, a lot of people are coming in and saying, you know, I'm on the list, but the guy across the road's water is contributing to my, my problem, and they're not on the list, so. Stand by.
Thank you, Terry. Folks have questions, feelings, thoughts to share, these gentlemen? Issues from your own communities?
Say that again, please.
Oh, we're just asking for questions, Terry.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Can I speak, I'm an alternate?
Yes, of course.
The Class Two Grants, how are they prioritizing those now in the state? I'm from Fairhaven, we've been anxiously awaiting our Class Two Grant for the last seven years. Since we seen one. So how, how, how does the Transportation AMC prioritize, or do you know?
All right, so I'm, what I'm going to start with is, I want you to send me an email with that exact question. And that's going to, that's going to cause me to get educated. So you're talking about Class Two Roads, and I understand because they're a separate, go ahead, tell me what you're experiencing.
Lack thereof.
Gotcha.
We haven't seen one in a very long time, and it's, it's difficult, it's difficult, difficult to keep up with what we have to maintain without that help. And if you're saying they're doing a hundred and twenty out of three hundred miles, it's even worse than, than we had hoped.
There you are. Because a, as I understand it, Class Two then are, are projects that are put together based on need, am I correct?
It used to be kind of a regular thing.
Yeah, okay, so tell, do, I won't waste everybody's time here on my, my lack of knowledge, so please send me an email, CKsare@ledge. That, let's see, I always forget this, ledge.state.vt.us, and of course, Devin could get ahold of me, and I will answer that question, this is good, this has helped me quite a bit. And I'll distribute it to the, to the group.
Yeah, and generally, what we've been told in the past is Class Two Grants run through the district, and the district maintains their own formula based on number of miles, how often you receive the grant, and the need. But that's, doesn't answer your question whatsoever, give you to, under the veil, look at any of the formulas, because you're not the only town I've heard that has complained about not getting a Class Two Grant in many, many, many years, so.
We used to figure almost every three years, it was kind of a three-year cycle, they did towns, and it's been much more than that, and it's, it hurts.
I can hear Matt mentioning the bridge on the crew.
Guys got off easy tonight. Well, I gotta say, thank you so much, and, you know, I might be subjective here, but I do think we have hands down the best delegation in the state, they're the most organized, they're most connected, they always invite us up to go see them in the mornings on Wednesdays, they meet every week. And Chris actually, even though it's his first year, has been doing all the coordinating for the delegation, so great, great work, Chris, and then special thanks to Jim and Appropriations for supporting the base level increase for the regional planning commissions. You know, every little bit counts, especially with how much towns are needing from us these days, so, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Definitely thank you. All right.
Thanks all. We'll sign off now.
Thanks for your time. Okay, Executive Directors' Report.
All right. Pop it up so you can all see what's going on. Okay. So, we held our second, you know, obviously I write these reports a little early, we have held it, it is not, it is past April ninth. We held our second Select Board meetup at the Castleland Recreation Department. We had over thirty sign up, and we had twenty-five attend across, I don't have my list, but more than fifteen towns were represented. We had a really great, rich discussion about municipal shared services that went beyond the time in which we had scheduled for it. So we're hoping this is just the beginning to this long conversation about how we can create efficiencies between coordination, municipal coordination and service agreements between these towns, so. We're going to keep holding these quarterly, we have another one scheduled for some time in July. And we're hoping to move these around the region, the first one was in West Rutland, and this one was in Castleton. So if anyone's willing to be a host and can handle about thirty to forty people, we'd love to get this in a different town in the region, maybe somewhere up north, Brandon, Pittsburgh, we could talk. But it's been really great, and it, it's so cool to see Select Board members from neighboring communities meet for the first time. And are like, hey, let's talk about this road that we co-plow, or everything under the sun, so that's been a really great endeavor so far. Hopefully you all have gotten emails from me, invites for trainings we're holding tomorrow and Thursday. So Logan's going to get into some higher level discussion over the future landing snap and where we're at tonight, but tomorrow and Thursday will be a much deeper dive into the nitty gritty behind Act one eighty-one. It is a one-day training held two different days, so I know there's some, some confusion around that. It's just so folks can have some flexibility if they have a conflict one of those nights, so. Please join if you can, there's no registration, it's come as you want, virtual or in person. The other training we're going to be holding, and I haven't announced it yet, because I'm not trying to bombard you with too much quite yet. It'll be our third Open Meeting Law Training with the Secretary of State coming down to Rutland. Last year, we probably had sixty people attend, both online and in person. And with so many new Select Board and Planning Commission members, it's a great opportunity to learn a little bit more about Open Meeting Law. Some unpleasant news, some of the federal changes have started to impact our work here. The first is the cancellation of the BRIC program, which funds our local hazard mitigation plans and scoping studies, was canceled for both two thousand and twenty-four and any projects from two thousand and twenty-three not awarded yet. Which we have several towns in the twenty-three and twenty-four bucket for local hazard mitigation plan updates, I don't know what this means yet for how this will impact your old towns moving forward, but local hazard mitigation plans are critical for you getting a lower E-RAF rating and reducing your payback requirements for FEMA. And we're hoping that these changes to FEMA don't impact our emergency management planning grant program, but it's possible, so. Stay tuned. Maggie's, go ahead, she is our Emergency Management Planner, so this is near and dear to her heart.
Yeah, I'm one of the first of the staff getting hit with the federal changes, so that's fun. So I just want to clarify something you said, Devin, which was that the town needs to have a local hazard mitigation plan for E-RAF, for increased E-RAF rates, while this is true, I have received reassurance from VEM that that qualification kicks in as soon as a town has APA or Approval Pending Adoption and has adopted the plan. So it doesn't necessarily require FEMA approval itself in order to gain that specific benefit.
Thank you for that, Maggie. So, yeah, more to come there, we don't want to leave towns high and dry, but this is a huge effort, and the last thing we want our towns to try to write these very technical, complicated plans themselves, because half the point of these is the process itself, not just the plan. We have had other impacts, three fully or partially canceled. Um, we have had other impacts, uh, three fully or partially canceled grants, including health equity. Energy efficiency and conservation block and climate pollution reduction, as you can imagine, those keep buzzwords were probably what. Did those in, uh, but. We have two major federal grants right now, the Department of Labor Works Six Grant. And the EPA Brownfields Grant, uh, that are not affected yet. Um, draft future land use map, uh, we met with a. An, uh, executive finance committee and presenting to you all tonight, and again. We're hosting a series of meetings with your select boards, uh, coming up, so hopefully you've seen those. Invites, we'll be reaching out once all of those are confirmed. Any questions on this stuff before we move on? Regional plan. This is a really super quick update. Uh, we're working on Task Three Rev Three, that's due Friday, that is the draft that is gonna be put into. The full layout edition and brought to you all at the. June meeting for review, so this will be the first time. Everyone will be seeing the plan in layout with all the data and graphics. Um, we'll also be starting our engagement strategy in May and June, there'll be a bunch of pop-ups in all our town meetings. Um, so between now, um, and September is our crunch time, we need to have this plan. Completely buttoned up, our engagement done, and we need to start the hearing process at the beginning of October to get it. Uh, approved by, um, April is when we need it, so it doesn't expire, so. We'll be asking a lot of you folks and we may not be taking, I hate to even say it, a summer break. Uh, but, we need to talk about that in June when we set the meeting and schedule. Uh, but we may need you all coming back in July and August to talk about that revision. And that is it.
Act One Eighty-One and the draft regional future plan use map.
Can you go full screen with that or no?
Mine's a good question.
Yeah, nice.
Okay. I have a feeling the full screen does something, well, we'll try it one more time.
Yeah, so, uh, the R R P C, um, for the regional plan, we've had, you know, uh. This is a multi-phase public engagement process, um, and really we're kind of launching into phase three, which is. Um, the alignment phase, um, there's really these two central questions we'll be asking, um, through our public engagement. Um, about the plan, uh, reflecting the right community economic development priorities. And, uh, do these priorities make the region a place you wanna live, work and play? Uh, this presentation, I'm gonna kind of walk through on a very high level on the purpose and design of the regional plan. Um, what are the elements of the regional plan, uh, statutes, um, that are applicable? And then also the future land use map and Act One Eighty-One. Uh, you know, basically the purpose and design of the regional plan, um, there are specific sections in, um. State law that speak to the purpose of a regional plan. Um, but the R R P C's declaration of inclusion and entitled line plan also informed the plan's design as well. Um, you know, this is, this is, uh, for everyone, I, I'm acknowledging that, I know some of you are, are new and, and some of. We've, we've talked about this before, so I wanna make sure that everyone's kind of on the same level playing field. Um, the time horizon of the regional plan, um, is, is an eight-year timeframe, um. With the adoption date of twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty-four, um, you know, it's, it's really centered around community economic development. Which is balancing economic development with our social, cultural, environmental priorities. Um, and as it relates to the declaration of inclusion and title nine plan, you know, these sort of, um, values of being flexible. Acknowledging that there's, you know, really unique needs across the regions, twenty-seven municipalities. That, you know, these solutions and, and the plan itself is really the, gonna be more successful, it's actually locally driven. Um, and that there's also that it's equitable and sustainable, um, and that there's actual outcomes, um, as one of the focus of the plan. Um, so, you know, state law outlines these specific elements of the regional plan, which are the different chapters of the regional plan. Um, and you know, this, this ranges from, you know, community facilities and utilities to natural resources to transportation and so on. Um, but you know, the land use chapter and the future land use map is sort of at the nexus of all these chapters and, and each one of these chapters feeds in. Um, to, to land use planning and the larger vision, um, and. You know, Act One Eighty-One essentially, so the R R P C has had a future land use map dating back to, I believe, nineteen seventy-one. Um, so there's been over a half centuries worth of regional future land use maps, various categories. Um, but Act One Eighty-One, um, changed the future land use map and it really standardized it. Um, and really, essentially these specific categories, um. Downtown center, village center, plant growth area, village area and, and so on and so forth, um. All the regions are required to, to map in these specific categories. Um, and within each one of these categories, there's specific, um, statutes that speaks to them, um. And so the, the training that is on Wednesday and Thursday is where we're really gonna get into the weeds of. Um, what is a downtown center, what is a village center, you know, all these different categories, what are the criteria? How are they mapped? I kinda right now just wanna give a kind of overarching big picture, um. And also that this map relates to the state designation program, which provides, uh, revitalization benefits. Um, there are five designations, but within our region, um, there's only three designations that towns use, which is the village center designation. The downtown designation and the neighborhood development area designation, um, and so those. That designation program's now gonna relate to the future land use map, that's one of the changes in Act One Eighty-One. And another is that there are these location-based, um, essentially Act Two Fifty, um, shifting from. The scale of the development, ten acres, one acre, to, to thinking more about the location of the development. And that location-based piece specifically tier one A and tier one B also relates to these specific categories. Uh, when we're talking about the specific categories, um, downtown center and village center. Are these, um, mixed-use traditional centers in a town. Uh, planned growth areas or village areas are the surrounding area or, or neighborhoods. Um, but it isn't to say that the surrounding area is exclusively residential, um, but in some cases it, it tends to be. Um, the transition area are these areas that, and often are areas that are currently, um, in a linear. Um, sort of, you know, linear strip development, I guess you could say, format, and really the, the intent there is to. To transform them and to, through infill development, um, and higher density and sort of reverse the strip development through. A network of streets, acknowledging that there are these geographic constraints, um, so depending on the transition infill area, it may be, you know. Not so feasible to be able to put it in a network of streets, there's just no room, um, or the configuration just wouldn't work. Um, but there is potential for infill development. These enterprise areas are your, you know, your industrial parks or extraction areas. Um, and just really commercial areas that kind of involve a larger land area. Resource-based recreation areas are not all recreation areas, it's, it's a little bit of a. On first blush, you might think it's all recreation areas, really what this is intended for is large-scale recreational facilities. Um, that have associated, uh, infrastructure or development, um. And, you know, on the, on the far right, uh, hamlets, rural general, rural ag and forestry and rural conservation. All of these speak to, to different rural categories, um, really with agriculture and forestry. Being high support for the, those land uses and conservation also having the highest support for those land uses, but it's really just generally a, you know, a rural category. Um, and hamlets are these sort of historic mixed-use areas, but for one reason or another, they don't qualify. Um, for a downtown or village center, um, and in many cases, they often used to be mixed-use. But since transitioned to being more of a, just a residential area, um, and so. There are all these categories that I just kind of walked through, um, and then there's the state designation program, which relates to the first four categories. On the left side of this graphic, and then depending on the area, um, there, it. Downtown centers, village centers, planned growth areas and village areas may be eligible for the tier one A or tier one B areas. I mean, it's, it's for Act Two Fifty specifically, it's up to the municipality to decide, do I wanna opt in or do I, um, do we not wanna opt in? Um, in these specific areas. And, you know, so when we're kind of thinking about on the, the regional level, and I'll note that, um. After this presentation, I'm gonna show an online map and for folks in the room, there, there are two paper maps, um, on the walls, um. And so when we start to think about, you know, these sort of, uh. Percentage of land area, number of buildings, really the, the big picture takeaway is, um, that. These, these specific areas that are not the rural areas, um, currently are of a higher density and have the infrastructure. Um, and have less environmental constraints, um, and zoning or, you know. Municipal plans, um, are planning for this area to be of a, of a higher density or of, of, for growth, um. And so, you know, when we're, when we're looking at this, this is about six percent of, of land area, but it represents about half. I think, I think it's about forty-eight percent of, of buildings in the region. On the, the flip side, um, these are the, the rural categories and, you know, is, is of a lower rural density. Um, and most of the region is rural, um, which so ninety-four percent of the region is mapped in, in one of these categories. I also wanna call out, if you look on the top right corner, um, in addition to state law, which specifies, um. These categories and specific criteria, there's also, uh, VATDA, which is a culmination of all the regional planning commissions. Has developed a methodology so that all the regional planning commissions are interpreting the law the same way. Um, an example is that there's terminology about walkable, what is walkable, how do we define what walkable is? You, so basically the regions have defined a way of saying, okay, here's how we're all gonna interpret the term walkable, so that. When we say an area is not walkable or walkable, um, that means the same thing across, you know, the state of Vermont. I mean, so we're all interpreting the law the same way, um, and so there's essentially this document that's an additional. Big document that walks through each one of these provisions and how to interpret them. So, I just kind of went through a lot, um, I'm acknowledging that, um, and, and so really from here, we're. One thing that's not mentioned on this slide that Devon mentioned is that we're having two regional trainings the next two nights. To really get into the weeds on, you know. How is an area determined to be a planned growth area or this, um, category or that category? And kind of walking through how mapping was done, walking through state law, um, more details on the state designation program. More details on the Act Two Fifty exemptions, um, for a regional audience who really wants to get, um, into the weeds. And, and answer all these questions, um, we then will be going, um. To select board meetings and in each of the twenty-seven towns, um, and presenting the map on a local level. Um, discussing that map, discussing how the map compares to R R P C's current future land use map. Um, and talking about whether the town might be interested in opting into the Act Two Fifty, um, exemptions. And also talking about the boundaries in the town, um, state law is, is actually where, where Jack is right by his head, there's. The actual, you could read the text if you want, state law is pretty, uh, long, but it is to say that on a case-by-case basis, you know, we wanna be able to go and. And include local input and, and feed that into the map, but ultimately our map needs to comply with state law and those specific criteria. Um, you know, so, so we'll be going to the, the towns to talk about that, and we'll also be going to the towns. Um, to be getting input on the larger plan, I'm relating to phase three, so. There'll be this planned visualization, which is kind of a cartoon depiction of the plan, there'll be chapter summaries, which is kind of a one or two-page overview. One-page overview of each chapter, and then we'll also be releasing the full plan. And, you know, we'll be getting input back on those two central questions I kind of led the presentation with, um. And really all of this, you know, we're, we're, we're going to the select board meetings really through, um, starting at the end of this month and, and carrying on through May. And with the hope of wrapping it up, I think towards late May, um. And that's it, and I, I know I just ran through, I feel like a lot of information very quickly, um, so I, I hope. It was somewhat digestible, I'm acknowledging that, yeah.
And you're, are you gonna show the map as well?
Yes, yeah.
So one thing I do wanna add to, you know, and like, obviously, so the methodology was required in statute. All the RPCs created that methodology and actually submitted it to the legislature as part of that requirement. In addition to the methodology, which lays out pretty, uh, sort of strict guidelines around this. When looking at every town, we looked at your future land use maps and your zoning maps to make sure that. This wasn't in severe conflict with what you all have decided locally as, these are our priority areas. Now, it's not one-to-one, right, because your zoning districts or your future land use areas. May not exactly line up with the intent or name of these areas. Uh, but it was a really good way for us to sort of ground truth them early before coming to the town and make sure that. We were avoiding major conflicts early on.
Yeah, and just before, I'm gonna kind of walk through just a couple examples, um, so that, you know, folks can get a sense of, um. These sort of areas, I do also, there's an online map, um, that will be sent out to everyone at the end of this meeting, um, and. I'm also gonna just drop it in the chat for folks who are online, so that they, you know, you're, you're welcome, there, you will see, um, that there is a disclaimer, um, that. One, this is a draft map, right, um, so we're, we're going to all the towns, um, there's also something I just want everyone to be aware of, that the. Resolution of the online map, if you were to zoom into your specific house or one very, you know, specific area, um. The map might load the boundaries slightly off, we are gonna, um, have PDFs available and those PDFs will depict. The exact boundaries, um, I do just wanna caution that, um, so if you are looking at, you know, is, is, where is my house, um, is. I just wanna leave that as a, as a caution. Yep, so the first, um, example I wanna give is, if you can think back when I was discussing, I was talking about these centers. Surrounded by a neighborhood, um, so I wanna give an example of a, of village center surrounded by a village area. Um, and this example is actually in, in Benson, um, and hopefully this will load pretty good. Um, and so what we're looking at here is, and something for everyone as well, is if you're unsure of is. What boundary is this area and you can also click on the exact area itself and it'll pop up and say, oh, this is a village center. Um, and so that might also be helpful, um, but you'll see here that this is, uh. Benson's village center designation, it's slightly expanded, Benson currently has a village center designation, um, in the designation program. And so what we looked at was to see, um, could that designation be extended at all? Um, to and abutting, uh, civic area or commercial area, um, or other mixed-use area. Um, and so, so in this example, their village center was extended slightly up north to, um, a town, a town lot, a town lot, um, that I believe. I think might be the transfer station, although I'd have to triple check, but it was, it was extended to a town-owned lot.
Yeah, it's like garage and.
Yeah, and this, this pink block, uh, or lighter pink block around it, the village area. This is actually a one-to-one of, of Benson's, um, zoning district for the village. Um, so if you took this in aggregate, and so this is a great example of showing, um, we were able to incorporate, um, for the most part. Um, this, this zoning district, and you'll see if, if we were to zoom in, that there is this little area that's not included. And that has to do, um, that has to do with that there's a, there's a river corridor, there's a basically a, a mapped flood constraint. And these are one of these things we had to consider when we're, when we're making the boundaries, um, and that ultimately feeds back into one of the criteria and state law. I wanna give another example, um, so this was a village center surrounded by a village area. I wanna give a, another example east of Benson, um, in Brandon, um. Where there's a little bit more going on, um, in terms of these sort of centers surrounded by neighborhoods. So Brandon's an example where they have, they have two centers, um, surrounded by two neighborhoods. One is, is downtown Brandon, which is in, um, dark purple. And this designation was also expanded, um, slightly due to another, uh, mixed-use and area, um. And I believe this is on Union Street, yeah, um. Um, and then also, this boundary that surrounds the downtown um is an area, one of the criteria, this is a planned growth area. One of the criteria for the planned growth area is it has to be served by a sewer or water. Um, and another thing is that it it has to be planned for a certain amount of density, uh, Brandon zoning meets that requirement. Um, and so what we were able to do is basically just use that um. That boundary and the sewer service area boundary to produce this boundary, so ultimately that that local boundary. Um, is another example that was kind of driving the process here. Um, and this is an existing downtown, Brandon has has one, it's been expanded slightly. Um, Brandon also has a a village center surrounded by a village area, um, and although, you know. Forestdale's village center um depicted in this darker pink um is not currently designated, although. Brandon's town plan in multiple places speaks to um wanting to designate that area as a village center, and so surrounding that village center. Is a village area, and so these are, these are sort of an example, two examples, you know, downtown Brandon and um Benson's. Village Center and the surrounding areas of how these centers fit into a a surrounding neighborhood. Um, you know, uh, we also talked about the transition infill, which um. I I kind of spoke to areas that are in a a linear configuration. Um, and so an example of a transition infill is in in Rutland Town, um, and so it's these orange areas surrounding. Um, downtown Rutland and the the planned growth area surrounding it. Um, and so these orange areas, you know, on on Route seven and Route four in all directions, north, south, east and west. These are examples of transition infill. Um, and there's only three others actually, in in Mendon, Pittsburgh and Brandon, um, for a transition infill. Uh, another example I wanted to show um is the enterprise areas, and those were the areas I mentioned are these sort of um. You know, industrial or uh areas that involve a large amount of land area. And so an example I want to give here is is in Claridin, um, the airport and the industrial park right ne- next to it. You can see in this this purple area right here. Um, and so that's another example of an enterprise area, you can also see these areas really along the, um, the slate valley is another example. Um, where you can see, you know, purple, where there's there's quarry land essentially. Um, one thing that was a little bit tricky uh for our region is there's a specific requirement that enterprise areas. Can't directly be adjacent to planned growth areas. If you're familiar with the history of the region, there's, there are a lot of these sort of industrial enterprise areas right next to. What would be mapped as planned growth area, so there's, there's a little bit of a challenge, um, you know, trying to fit the Rutland region in this sort of criteria that. Doesn't fit well with the Rutland region, um, and so that was a consideration to note. Um, and then in terms of resource based recreation areas, um, developed shorelines are really um. Where this is most prominent as well as ski areas, um, and so an example I want to show is is Lake St. Catherine. And so for for lakes, often what we did was we um have a a shoreline buffer essentially. Um, and so you can sort of, you can see this um on Lake St. Catherine down to Little Lake. Um, and it says lighter green, um. That surrounds it, actually, if I click on it, that's what's helpful about this, so you'll see it pop up. Um, and then, you know, when we're we're looking at the rural areas and I'll I'll kind of go back to kind of a region wide focus. Um, if you're not in these sort of areas I just went over, um, that that aren't rural specific. You would be categorized as agriculture and forestry, um, if you're enrolled in the current use program. Um, and then conservation, there's a whole series of different mapping layers um that I could, I could, I have a list of right here. Um, but essentially, there's a whole series of these conservation mapping layers that if you're not um in the current use program. And you are in one of these conservation mapping programs, you're in the conservation um category. If you're not in the current use program and you're not in one of these conservation mapping programs, then you're in rural general, which is this um lighter. Yellowish color, um, now you can see here, here's an example of, you know, rural general, that's. That's not very helpful to click on, but um. Yeah, so these are, these are just a couple, a couple examples, uh, one other thing I want to highlight is that. I did briefly mention hamlets, and hamlets are actually, unlike the other districts, hamlets are just depicted as a dot. Um, Mount Holly is is the place hamlets are are most common, um, I think Mount Holly has. Two or or three, um, but you can see them in in four. There might be, um, and and these are just little circles on the map essentially, um, and and underneath it, you can. See that it's it's still mapped as a, and here's an example of where this gets all weirdly pixelated, um. But essentially, this is not a good example either because it's covered by this text. But, long story short, it is a is a dot on the map, unlike the rest of the um districts, which are are polygons. Um. And really, it's it's, the main intent is really to acknowledge these sort of historic clusters, but they're not planned for significant growth.
So we'll get into this way more in the trainings and.
Right.
In our town meetings, but a lot of confusion and apprehension out there around like. The rural areas, the planned growth areas, and what that could mean for housing and future development. The rural areas and rural conservation are not the tier three areas, the tier three. Uh, process for mapping is actually completely independent of the RPCs. That's going to be done by the Land Use Review Board and the Agency of Natural Resources, so. Don't think that just because we mapped it, rural conservation, that that means you won't be able to. Build a house there or do anything on that property, that's not the case at all. In fact, we don't know what the methodology for tier three will be, so. A lot of the conversation early on in Act one eighty one is like the haves and the have nots. And it's not that way at all, you know, tier two, which we're, most of the region will fall into. Is truly just business as usual, um, so we don't expect anything to change. If you're not getting Act two fifty permits now for building a house, you won't need to then either, so. We don't, like we said, we don't know the tier three yet, um, that rulemaking is happening now. But don't think that this layer represents that, so I want to squash those fears immediately that. Just because your town didn't qualify for these planned growth areas, downtowns or villages. Doesn't mean that your town won't still see housing and commercial growth in the future, uh, we hope that. Every town does, and our motivation going into this was. Can we expand this benefit as far as reasonably possible? Excuse me, while still getting this map accepted by the Land Use Review Board, so know that. Every one of those pink areas and um lighter toned areas that aren't in the rural categories. We have really tried to make as big as possible, and you, you can see this if a lot of you guys are on the. Town planning commissions, you know how small your downtown and village center boundaries are now. And you look at these maps, like Rutland City is a great example, downtown's so small, this covers literally the entire. City of Rutland, other than Pine Hill Park, which you're not going to build housing there anyways, right, so. You know, it's all to say is, we're looking at this mapping project as a way to. Incentivize and benefit development in the region as much as humanly possible, while still. Preserving our natural resources, which are integral to keeping um the environment and our culture, you know, intact, so. I want to just make those disclaimers early before we get into the nitty gritty over the next few days and weeks. Um, so you all can communicate that back to your own towns and sort of squash any of the the fears that may not be justified.
Any questions?
Everyone come in Wednesday, Thursday, there's gonna be more pizza.
Yeah, like Logan mentioned about getting all the select boards. At the end of May, is that, that's a tight schedule or achievable or?
So we have all the three towns already scheduled, and our plan is um to provide a bunch. I think it's a ten page packet of information to sort of lay groundwork, but the the intent is to have. All of you as regional commissioners, all the town planning commission members. And all the town select board members present at this mapping meeting, where we bring in a printed map of your town. Both the old version, the new version and the region, and dive in deep to it and give you the overview, so. You're able to not only review it, but think about it, comment on it and get back to us, and. You know, for those towns that are eligible, draft the municipal resolutions to be tier one B eligible. And again, that's the other thing to know, tier one A, that rulemaking is all being done by the Land Use Review Board, so. You will not do anything with tier one A until after January one, twenty twenty six, so. We're having every town that may be eligible, who's willing to opt into the one B program, and if you advance to one A, great. If not, you'll still be one B, and again, just not to dive in all the details, but one B is. Fifty units or less on ten acres or less, and one A is complete Act two fifty exemption, so. Lot of cool stuff, pretty nuanced, but it's, the potential is huge for our region especially.
What evening reading. Okay.
If there's not enough already.
Yes, right, the financial reports, yeah, I provide those. Um, the February financials were included in everybody's packet and boy packet. Um, if you're looking at the February P and L, it reflects in that income of roughly sixty two thousand five hundred. Um, we'll just go down on the revenue and expenses and just point out the highlights. Line four zero two, local income, um, that is high, and that's because all towns have been invoiced their FY twenty five dues. Happy to report, um, and I reported this last month, that all but one town um has paid to date, so thank you to all the towns that have uh. That have paid for their FY twenty five dues. Um, line four zero three point five, this is our uh clean water service provider funding from Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation. Uh, it's a mouthful, um, and. This revenue is low, it's because a lot of these projects are in the development phase versus the construction phase. Um, line four zero three A, state income not permanent, um, this is high, it's just because. Um, this is really a timing thing, it's based on the structure of the agreement, the neighborhood agreement that we have. Um, it's based on how the state wants us to invoice for those funds. Let's see, line four zero seven, U S Department of Energy, um, there's no activity here, um, we are waiting on a E E C V G agreement. Um, that.
Is not coming.
Is not coming, so.
So sad.
Line four one seven, a U S Department of Labor is low, however, staff is putting a lot of staff hours to this, this is the work six. Grant, and you will continue to see this revenue um decline. Let's see, line four twenty one was not budgeted, but then you'll hear me talk about this and um, let's see, four twenty one. I like to point this out because miscellaneous income, you know, usually don't have anything under miscellaneous income or expense, so it's always. Good to explain um the reason for this, so miscellaneous income, um. Through our credit card expenses, all staff have a, all full time staff have a credit card and um. We have credit card points and Karen worked with the credit card company to actually combine all the points and actually we received revenue. Um, so converted those points into revenue back into um the organization and that's, you know, it was over two thousand dollars. And I'm going to briefly mention it on the expense side as well. So looking at the expense side, line five thirty five, marketing and sponsorship, sponsorship, this is high, again, it's timing. Uh, because we did um do the Rutland feud and that expense was captured in January. Um, let's see, line five thirty seven, town in organizational support is high. And again, this has to do with the credit card uh point income, so when we did the budget update in January. Um, the intent was to post that revenue against this expense, but we actually had to shift the revenue up on the top to uh miscellaneous revenue. So line five fifty, rent and occupancy improvements is high, and again, timing, it just means that there's ten rent payments uh to date in the uh through February. Line five sixty, insurance is high, and it's because RRPC's uh insurance has been paid in full to date. Now, if you're looking at the balance sheet, you're looking at accounts receivable, as of two twenty eight, uh, accounts receivable totaled roughly three hundred and fifteen thousand. And as of the Executive Finance Committee meeting on April seventh, it totaled almost three hundred and thirty seven thousand. Um, the biggest uh house receivable out there, um, as of uh April seventh. Is the fourth quarterly payment uh for the A C C D funds, and that's a little more than a hundred and sixty one thousand dollars. So just a couple miscellaneous things, um. Of course, we're currently, staff's currently working on uh FY twenty six budget uh tomorrow, where Devon and I are meeting with all the staff to. To review those projections for for next fiscal year. Um, and just so you uh, just something that I have worked on, um, so every year we have to submit to B Trans an indirect. Rate proposal, and uh what that means is indirect rate is um. Is a rate that can be charged to personnel, um, if the grantor allows it, and it covers expenses that cover. All of our work here, you know, it has to cover all of our program areas, so so like, like rent, or think of it as like an overhead, so. Uh, we went ahead, we submitted that proposal in March, and we already have an approval rate for um FY twenty six. And that is my report. Thank you, any questions? Great job, as always, thank you.
Yeah, one special note, Mary Kitty is celebrating her ten years tomorrow, so. Round of applause, decade, amazing. You're very lucky, thank you.
Okay. We have a member at large vacancy uh on the Executive Finance Committee. And I know the Executive Finance Committee in its current form only has two more months to go before we elect again, but by our bylaws. We have to have a full committee, so we are asking. Uh, anyone who would like to volunteer to come to two extra meetings, one in May and one in June. We get fed, if that's any help. Um, and it's for the member at large, as a chair, I do uh have the responsibility of making sure that it gets full. Uh, filled, so, do we have anybody who would like to attend, please? And you can do a video if you have to, so you can stay at home in your PJs, nobody will know about it, drink your wine while we're here.
And it could be a good segue into if you're considering a leadership position but aren't totally sure, it's only a two month commitment. Um, ideally, we'd love to see folks who haven't participated as much. Get to learn the organization better, these guys can all attest, it's, you get to see how the sausage is made in a whole nother way. Um, it is a lot of work, but it is super fulfilling, I'm putting words in mouths now, so. But yeah, whoever is willing and able, um, we'd be forever grateful.
Anyone?
When do you usually meet? When do you?
So Monday before our full board meeting.
Usually it's the second Monday and it meets from five to six. And as I said, you get fed a little bit better than the pizza.
Yeah, real food.
Yes, thank you, Karen. Anyone?
I'm going to be gone all June, so I miss one meeting right after that.
Yeah, that's there.
That's all right.
You put everyone's name in a hat and just pick someone up.
We can do a random number generator and that's.
We can do that.
So uh, if uh, nobody's willing, I'm.
Thank you, Dave.
To uh, for the two months.
Thank you, Dave, and you had.
As somebody who's done it before, I wanted to see if some new one.
For a few years, we, you know the ropes very well, yeah, thank you, Dave, that's.
Thank you.
And that's a nice seamless transition Avril and Stan that see.
Okay, now this brings, comes to the next one, which is the nominating committee for uh fiscal year twenty twenty six. That position, all those positions start as of the uh first of July, technically speaking. And uh, we will be voting on a board, um. Uh, hopefully presented by the nominate committee at the June annual meeting, however, um, we do have. However, we do have positions that are open, the Chair position. I have been sitting next to Devin for three years and Devin finally gets rid of me. I promise, change my perfume. I hear you.
Those are tears, what?
A lot. Okay. I did take a shower today. Okay, sorry about that. So what we are looking for is a, someone who would like to chair the Nominating Committee. We discussed it in the Executive Committee. Normally members of the Executive Committee have taken over as the Nominating Committee, but it's about time that we reach out to the full board commissioners, especially to some of the new people to get further involved. And a nominated committee is one of the easiest ways to do it. You don't have to meet. You can do it through email. And we do have people that are willing to continue on, right Larry? So what I would like, if at all possible, and if I have to, I will call someone and say, congratulations, you, you get picked. That is
Within the bylaws.
It is within the bylaws. But we, you know, I really think that if you want to get more involved and see again behind the scenes, I won't say how the sausage is made. I'll say behind the curtain. It is a nice way of getting started. And people, we, anyone on the committee would be more than willing to help out with suggestions and Devin is very good about suggestions. People might be willing to just volunteer. So first of all, would I, could we get some volunteers to serve on the Nominating Committee? And you don't have to meet in person. You don't have to meet at all. You can do it through telephone and email, which is the best part. And you get credit for it, which is really great, you know, a gold star when you go to heaven. Or whichever way we're going. Okay.
How many people do you need on the Nominating Committee?
What we really would like is a Chair and three, three members if possible. So a four-member committee. Anyone?
I'll volunteer.
Yay.
Well, we got one. Three more to go. I feel like an auctioneer here. Thank you. Three more?
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Okay, one more, two more. We could do this.
Any folks online?
Anyone online?
No.
They can't find the video, but fast enough. Okay. Any, we can do it with a three-person committee if, if necessary, if anybody wants to serve. It really does not take up an awful lot of time. It's going to take probably three hours total.
Maybe.
Yeah, if that. So it's not.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it.
Jason, anybody else going once? I feel like an auctioneer.
Not this time.
No?
Good for you. I won't let in right now. You're doing too much already.
That's okay. Anyone online? Okay, well.
So I will send an email to Andrea, Jason, to just kick things off.
Yep.
I think we technically need a motion. If we could just do the vacancy in all three at once as a foul swoop, that'd be great.
So what we need now is a motion from someone that basically would address the fact that David, thank you very much, has volunteered to serve as a member-at-large for May and June. And that the three people, Andrea, Jason and God, sorry, I can't read my own writing, David, have all volunteered to serve on the Nominating Committee and you will bring your slate to the full board in June. So you have eight weeks. And I can help you twist arms if necessary.
I'll make that motion if I repeat.
We've got a recording, we're good.
Good. May I have a second? Two. All those in favor who say aye?
Jason.
Jason? All those opposed? Thank you very much.
You're good. That's all six positions that we'll be doing?
Yes.
Well, normally they should, yes. It doesn't mean that you can't call Andrea and say
Now there's seven.
Seven. Oh, yeah.
We're actually going to have a meeting upcoming, so.
So you're going to send us an email outlining?
Yep.
What to do and who currently staying?
Yeah, and actually
We'll probably just have a quick meeting, just to make it easy.
Yeah, it's, it really doesn't take very much seriously. And you have members that are currently on the Executive Committee that can stay in their positions. So if you can twist the rock to continue to do that. Now offer a beer. Now, by law, I have to step down after three years. So all right, thank you all so much. So the Executive Finance Committee report?
Yep, we met one day, April 7, and we went over the financials, director's report, regional plan report. And then the draft Act 250 and Section 248 criteria, the same draft that the Regional Committee reviewed today. So we're feeling good about being able to put that forward. Finally, we reviewed a draft rent and leave policy that I was a slacker about and they asked me to put together in September maybe. That is still being reviewed by our attorney, so we didn't bring it to the full board this month, but we'll get you a draft next month. And then we focus on the vacancy in Nominating Committee.
What was our? Great. Regional Law Committee report?
Oh, okay.
Do you need that motion? I've got it.
We need a motion. I got it right here. Same thing, right?
Yeah, the motion wasn't written on that page. So as long as you got it, you're good. Why don't you just review the project and then I'll
Project, okay. We discussed that there was an application submitted to amend an original 250 application for I raffled it in East, on East Wells Road in Wells. The general scope would be just to extend the length of the original application and expand on the size. Extraction limit, yes. It's something that's pending, so we don't have to necessarily vote on it. However, we felt that it would be prudent for Devin just to issue a letter. And in discussion found no regional impact or performance issues, correct?
Yep. Yeah, and just as a side note, they did receive a notice of alleged violation because their permit expired in 2019. And they're just submitting the amendment now. We reviewed the project file from the original permit in 2009 and they did receive a no significant regional impact in conformance with the regional plan letter from the RPC. So the motion would be to submit a letter to Act 250 stating no significant regional impact in conformance with the regional plan.
May I have a? May I have a second? All those in favor? All those opposed? You got it.
Thank you.
Next official report?
Lyle is not here tonight because he is with the iBots team on the national championship. Or world championship maybe even. So again, our robotics team is, is on the world stage doing incredible stuff. So good luck to Lyle, his kid and all the other students in the region, making STEM careers come alive.
Do you know where they are?
They were in Texas last year. Did you guys, is it Texas again? Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's a production.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, unless there was any other business, then may I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
May I have a second? Anyone in favor of not adjourned?
We are adjourned at 22:00.
Thank you all so much. Good to see you.
Yeah, same. Good to see you too.
But just